So, Roman numeral three is the reading of the records.
Make a motion to waive the reading and place on file?
I'll second that. Motion is made and seconded to waive the reading and place on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you, Roman numeral four's public comment.
You make a motion to open public comment?
Second motion?
Motion is made and seconded to open it up to public comment. Make sure you have signed in so that everybody knows that you want to speak. Our superintendent has graciously given up her spot up front here to anybody that's going to speak here tonight during the public comment portion. Just remind you that to keep your comments to at least three minutes. And technically, public comment can only last 15 minutes, but if it does need to be extended, I will take that under advisement. So we could have our first speaker come up and state your name and your address.
A point of order, Madam Chair. Just the city of residence, not the physical address for student safety. That's in our rules.
Excuse me?
The speaker does not have to say their physical address due to safety concerns. We wrote that into our rules. I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Sounds good, but we're going to change that. Mr. Mangan?
Madam Chairman, I apologize. Do we make a vo-
Yes. Yes, we did.
We did? I know we talked about it, but I don't know if there was an actual vote or anything that-
Then we opened it up to public comment. Who's up first?
Hello. My name is Nicholas Perera.
Hi.
Hi. I would just like to point that Priya is an amazing woman.
Excuse me, if you could use, when discussing the superintendent, if you could use her formal name, Superintendent Tahilani?
Okay.
To give her the respect she deserves.
Oh, of course. Superintendent Tahilani is an amazing woman. In my experiences with her, she has done nothing but good in the community. As a person of color myself, I am Brazilian. Both my parents have immigrated from Brazil. It is amazing to see a person of color in power, especially a woman of color. And I'm so proud of her for everything that she's done for this community, not to mention that she fights for her position being a woman of color in power. And she does what she wants, and she's a great woman. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. And, sorry, I had a script, and then my phone died, so, yeah, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up? Oh. Darren Costa?
How are you?
Are you Darren?
I am, yes.
Oh, hi.
I love that down, it's exciting. This chair. All council folks, I don't know all of your names. I probably don't know most of your names. Can you hear me well with the mask on? Okay. So, my name is Darren Costa. I reside in Everett. Thank you to the Chair of the School Committee. Ms. Cristiano, correct? Okay. And its members for your service to the school system. I'm concerned about what I've seen submitted in today's agenda. I want to inform the public and engage them in understanding the outcomes of your decisions today. There is no MGL requiring the superintendent to freeze hiring, freeze raises, or defer extended contractual relationships, even at the direction of this committee. Your elected duty is to establish and maintain policy, approve the budget, and the hiring and direct supervision of the superintendent? Sorry, I'm not going to try to butcher your name. Sorry about that. The superintendent has full power and authority to implement their plan, which was included in their approved budget. Any deviation from this now would create a failure that would fall completely on this committee of elected officials. If you can add value, wait until the 2223 budget. It's right around the corner. Your duty here is to the children, who are entitled to a more adequate education. More than adequate education, sorry. An environment where high flyers can fly, and specifically just smash glass ceilings. So, I'm just going to be more specific now. In items five and six, I look forward to the sponsor explaining in detail the reasons for their request to freeze hiring or budgeted positions. Could you comment on your understanding of the current state of staffing? Can you explain the downstream effects to the students for this decision? In line item seven, I'd like to understand the qualification of this board to determine qualifications of teachers and administrators. Isn't certification governed specifically by DESI, Department of Elementary and School Secondary Education? In item nine, the Chair and the Vice Chair call for ESER funds to be used for an operational audit. Can the sponsors discuss the criteria specifically outlining the ESER spending? Also, from my understanding, there was an audit done in 2019 by the actual, the School Finance Task Force. Can we get an update on that assessment that had already taken place? What about a follow-up on the assessments taking place by Open Architects, which I believe is a third party that does a specific type of assessment that was required for the public school system? Lastly, this board needs to concentrate specifically on brainstorming the appropriate way to spend these funds to benefit and advance the children with public input. Right? So just to be clear, the ESER funds should be spent with public input, encourage public input. And then lastly, with ESER funds, aren't these, and I'd love to hear a little bit more about this, aren't they specifically meant for student enrichment programs? Item 14, this would reduce the amount of time allowed specifically to the superintendent's participation in the meetings? This would actually allow the superintendent to update, this actually allows, her time here allows the public to be updated on the occurrences and advancements in our school, more so now than ever, considering Omicron, I'm not going to try to butcher it for my Greek friends, the wave of COVID infections that have happened recently. It's more important that we, as the public, hear from the superintendent. This reminded me specifically of a council meeting that occurred back in May 26 of 21. I do watch the council a lot closer than I watch the school committee, but I'm changing that, given I have a four-year-old running around here as owlet somewhere, so if you've seen a little kid run around, he's up way past his bedtime. So this is a big stretch for me. Say it again? Yeah, he probably is. I luckily had my neighbor donate some time to me to help me do this. He's also a member of the high school here. So it was specifically regarding a May 2621 incident in the council meeting that involved three members of the school, specifically the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and the head of facilities. At the time, Ward Six City Councilor denied a request of a motion of the President to allow all three to speak in front of that council, rather making a motion specifically to have the assistant superintendent, the head of facilities, speak. I think this could be seen as a microaggression, and I just wondered what the board would think about that. And also, would it benefit this body in all to have a diversity training? As I've heard yourself, Ms. Chair, mention early on, you know, we do have to be cognizant of the background of, and the diverse background of the school system. So-
You better finish it up because you're-
Last point, thank you so much, Ms. Chair.
You're over the three minutes.
I appreciate it. Yep, I'm rambling. Lastly, from the December 2021 meeting, and I'm new to the school committee meeting, so I'm new to executive session specifically. Number two under executive session discussed specifically reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of complaints or charges brought against a public officer or employee staff pursuant to Mass. General Law License 38, Section 2181. That's a lot. It's number two under executive session of December 2021 agenda. I just want to understand, when will the public be informed specifically further on this topic? And it seems to be an important matter there to safety and well-being of our students. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have someone, last name of Gassama? No, I didn't say your name, first name, because I would have butchered it. What is it?
Isitu.
Isitu?
Yeah.
Oh, that's so helpful. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Yeah, please.
My name is Isitu Gassama, and I'm a senior at Everett High School. So it came to my knowledge that there would be a new policy adopted where basically there would be a freeze on wages for people who are hired, like janitors, mental health services at the school. And I feel like that the wages shouldn't be frozen because in regards to like the cleaning of the school, the school is not as clean as it can be. And I think we actually need more janitors instead of not hiring anymore because with the new variants that are emerging, especially in the school, I myself like had COVID in the past because I contracted it from here. I think that it's really important that we have more janitors in the school to keep the school clean and to prevent surges of COVID. I think it's very important, especially now, more than ever. In regards with our superintendent, Priya, I feel like it's great to have, seeing a person of color be the superintendent because myself, I'm Gumbian. I'm from West Africa. I'm black. I never really seen anybody that like is similar to me, like somebody who is from like another country. Like it's amazing to see a woman, especially, and a woman of color at that, to be the superintendent and having that part, because I've never seen that here in Everett. So I, but I also think it's really important that cleaning efforts are kept. Our superintendent is kept, because I really like what she's done with Everett, and I like seeing the change in Everett, especially since Everett is a majority-minority city here, so, and all the students here, most of them are people of color. So I think it's great to be represented by somebody who has the same views as us and sees eye to eye and can represent us. That's all.
Thank you very much. Next up, Keon? Is that how you say your first name, son? State your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Keon Law, and I'm a junior at Everett High School. Firstly, I would like to say that it's an honor to be at the presence and speak upon everyone here. And secondly, I would like to bring this public comment towards the spotlight of mental health, and especially the mental health of students at Everett High School. In particular, I would like to highlight the 90-day freeze that is being proposed on the agenda. I think that the freezing of staff, especially like administrative staff and mental health workers, are really detrimental to the well-being of students themselves. And I think that a lot of things that are being forgotten about the past during virtual learning and the pandemic is still being unnoticed, and that like people still don't really value mental health as much as they should. And it really brings on to the next point that I'm going to make, the representation here at, you know, the seats and the people I have around me and this great community. I would add on that we should have more people similar to the superintendent who are people of color and who really represent the student body. Like wherever it's heading in 10 years is going to be much different than what it was 20 years ago. And I think that this is a crucial point that we need to emphasize and place very close attention to in terms of moving forward today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. I have no more listed speakers. Oh, sorry. Yeah. Okay. We have a lot of toys there. Is there anybody else that would like to speak during the public, anybody else? Go.
Hello. My name is Gabby DiGavella, full name Gabrielli. I'm a sophomore at Everett High. From the way I listen to all the students, I noticed a lot of mention on color and the superintendent, and I wanted to elaborate on how important it is to have a superintendent of someone like Priya, like Mr. Tahilani, in our office, because it's not just about color, it's about perspective. It's about what she brings to the table and how that impacts the students of Everett, of Everett Public Schools. We're mostly of color, we're mostly of different backgrounds, most of our parents are immigrants. We all come from different cultures. There's really so much diversity in this school and this district as a whole. It's very much more so impact, like higher on statistics than the rest of Massachusetts and basically the rest of the country. We basically represent America's melting pot. And to have someone that brings that perspective to the table, that represents all of us as a whole in such power, I think that's really impactful, and that can just make our district so much better off in terms of our students, in terms of our teachers, in terms of our, the system, the way we work and our curriculum. That brings so much to the table, and that can bring so much more to our future students and like our, the future generations, because that's what we want. That's what Everett Public Schools is about. I feel like that's, we can all agree that we want better for our students, right? And here, speaking as a student, I feel that having someone of such power within our district and be of that same perspective as the most of us, I think that's a great way to start, and that's a great way to build up on. Thank you.
Okay. I'll allow one more speaker because we're actually over time. I'm only going to give you two minutes, just so you know.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Girlie Adrian. I reside at 15 Coverland Street in Everett, Massachusetts. I came here tonight to speak in support of our superintendent. I don't have much to say, but getting to know her for the past two years, she's been an astounding leader. She has shown true leadership just by showing the amount of students who are here tonight. And I just want to say I'm proud of her work. I truly support her, and I don't like what I'm seeing so far, especially when we have somebody who was, decided to come here to work and put our students first. To see the actions that the school committee wants to bring forth tonight, it's sad. It's frustrating, and it's disappointing. We have somebody who wants to make good changes for our school and for our kids first. We have to remember that. We have to put our children first. We have to make sure that this district is being represented by somebody who they respect and who they can look up to. We've heard from some of the children tonight, from the students, who have said this and speak on this. I hope that we could take away our personal feelings. Sadly, I don't know if that's the case, but I really do hope so. And just again, let's put our students first. Let's make sure we elect somebody, or keep somebody in the seat who really cares about this job. And I think our superintendent truly does. And so, I came here, I've been away for a while, but I wanted to come out here because I strongly support her and I really believe in her work. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to close that portion of the-
Motion to close public comment?
Motion is made and seconded to close public comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. All those opposed, the ayes have it. Okay.
Thank you. So, Roman numeral five, it's the superintendent's report, and we're going to start with the update as usual. So tonight's update features a lot of different information. Of course, we're going to talk about some of the great things that are happening in our district. We're also going to have a COVID update, as we usually do. I do want to give you guys an update on the successful cleaning efforts and the bid that we have put out for a cleaning service. We are also in the midst of our mid-year assessments, so I'd like to give you an update on that. And then we also have some really great news to share about our special ed department as well, so I'm very excited to be able to share all of this wonderful news with you. Except for the COVID stuff, that's not exactly wonderful, but we're getting through, and I just want to thank everybody for everything they're doing to help us. So first, I am really excited to start with the stars at Everett High School, so I wanted to give a congratulations to our EHS Science Department. They were named this year as the 2020-2021 Joshua Boger Innovative School of the Year by the Mass BioEd Foundation. So they received this honor in particular because of the developments that we have made in our biotechnology pathways, and that's not just our biotech pathway, that's also our STEM pathway as well. Our STEM Innovation Students and our Biotech Students, they've competed in the Massachusetts Science and Engineering Fair. Others use the coursework as a springboard to enter into high-visibility programs such as the Lee Knox Scholar Summer Project, MIT's Broad Summer Scholars Program, and the Foresight Student Scholar Summer Internship. And as well, the Health Professions Recruitment and Exposure Program at Harvard Medical School. However, one benefit to all of our students is the fact that this gives our students the hands-on experience that all of them so greatly deserve. So again, another big congratulations to our Science Department. We were also very fortunate last week to have one of our own EHS alums, the class president from the senior class of 2021, Anne-Laurie Pierre, who left us to go to Howard University last year, but her presence is certainly not diminished here in Everett, as she returned with some of her peers who also left Everett High School to go to Howard. And they actually led a session here at Everett High School for 25 of our senior class. They talked a lot about what the transition to college looks like. They answered questions for our students, and they also spoke extensively just about the experiences they've had at a historically black college and university, and the amount of confidence that that has brought them in that experience. So it was really wonderful to have her back. And she also has actually initiated a mentorship program that she's putting together specifically for our girls, where our high school girls will be working with our middle school girls to provide extra support, and again, to make that transition from middle school to high school a better one. And so I look forward to being able to give you updates on that program as we roll that out. And again, I just want to thank Anne-Laurie and all of her peers for coming back and seeing us. It's always great when we have our students return. I do just want to continue the tradition of congratulating our TGH graduates. So we recently, in December, graduated 32 of our parents and guardians who received a certificate and a Chromebook upon completion of the Technology Goes Home program, which we are so excited to bring here to Everett. They are now part of the 90 Everett residents and families that have completed this program and been able to have this experience. During the program, they get to learn a lot about, you know, using technology in order to communicate with friends and family, to be able to have more meaningful engagement with their students, education, and also how to access benefits and look for jobs. So it's a really wonderful program. It's actually led in the native language by our family liaisons, which is really amazing. So we had 12 graduates from our Haitian Creole course, which was taught by Beverly Adonis. We had eight in Rixey Reyes's Spanish class, seven in the English section taught by Larissa Blovelt, and five in the Portuguese class offered by Daniela Braga. So again, since we launched this program, it's been a huge success, and we look forward to continuing to provide this as a resource to our families. I think another one of the things that I've seen is a major benefit of this program too is that it allows our families to sort of come in and start to build those relationships with our family liaison, so it's not just about learning technology, it's about opening that first door of communication. And I think that once we have initiated that engagement, that communication, and brought them into our school buildings, not just for the classes, but also for ceremony at the end, that they feel far more comfortable coming into the schools, calling up our family liaisons, being more engaged in their students' education. And I think that's also one of the most important things that this program brings to us. A huge congratulations to our Special Education Department. So as many of you probably already know, all of our departments have to go through coordinated program reviews every few years by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, where they are measured based on 39 standards and three indicators. In all of my time in education, I have never once heard of a school district that came back with no findings for any of these kinds of coordinated program reviews, and for it to be our Special Education Department, which I will say you can always, and we always will strive for improvement in our Special Education Department, but still, to be able to demonstrate flawless compliance is certainly a step in the right direction. And I just want to thank our Special Education Director, Mr. Donahue over there. They worked incredibly hard with this team. And all of the school leaders, the teachers, our paraprofessionals, our ETLs, our ancillary service providers, all of the amazing team that made this happen. Just to give you a little bit of an idea of what the process looks like, it actually started in spring of 2021 with a self-assessment and the establishment of a timeline. They also looked through relevant records that we had. Then the review continued into the summer and fall of 2021 with a series of meetings with the state, the submission of follow-up materials. It also concluded in the fall with an onsite visit that was very comprehensive, because they toured three of our EPS schools, interviewed 13 staff members, compiled a parent survey, surveyed and interviewed me as well, and conducted 14 folder reviews in which all the documents in a student's special education folder were thoroughly analyzed. And I will say that a coordinated program review in the best of times is incredibly stressful for a school district and for a department. And if you keep in mind the fact that this started in spring of 2021, when we were just returning from remote learning to in-person instruction, and then the summer when we're planning a full return to school, and then of course, I don't need to recap to you all of the challenges that we met as we were entering back into the school year. So to be able to do this amongst all of those different challenges, I just really can't give enough thanks to our incredible staff, our incredible educators in this district. So thank you. We have begun our mid-year assessment, so at the beginning of the year, we do have our interim assessments. We have them in the middle of the year, and then we have them again at the end of the year in May. So currently, at Everett High, they were taking their exact PAST assessment for reading and math to determine their progress. At the K to eight level, they're also taking their I-ready math and reading assessments. And at the grades K to five, where they're taking I-ready as well, they also did work very diligently to complete the DIBELS and the ACADIENCE assessments as well. I think one of the most important parts of our interim assessments is the fact that they, you know, MCAS is a Summit of Assessment, it's a lagging indicator. When you have your interim assessments, they really give you, they're sort of predictive measures for how we're going to be able to perform on our standardized assessments, but they're also real-time assessments of how our students are actually doing in school, how, what are their gaps? And especially after last year, you need to identify those gaps early so that we can, the teachers can adjust their instruction accordingly. So these interim assessments are especially important this year, always very important. And then we're also using them in order to inform our intervention blocks. So at all of our schools, I'm sure you've heard, we have WIN blocks, which stands for what I need. And so at the end of these interim assessments, our teaching groups, our interventionist groups, our coaches, they will all be convening and deciding where now the students are and determining what interventions they may need for the WIN block. So we will see, once we've completed these assessments, we'll sort of look at all of the data, determine where students need to go for their next WIN block, and then we'll reshuffle schedules based on those needs. We also held our second PAC of LPAC meetings, or English Learner Parent Advisory Council meetings. This is not only a requirement of DESI, but also just wonderful practice, and it's been a really great thing to bring to Everett. Again, these are meetings that are actually held in the native language, and they were coordinated by our EL Director Brittany Hay, who is here tonight, and also led by our amazing family liaisons. So they are led in Spanish, Portuguese, and Haitian Creole. We did have 100 participants in all of these different LPACs. And we, during those presentations, the three, the three different meetings, there were Zoom pop-up polls, so that the families could give feedback on the questions that you see here about what their priorities are for their students, what are the things that they want to see in the curriculum. And so we are really trying to not just give out surveys, but also it's great to have a meeting where you can then kind of get, be speaking about what it is we're doing in school, get their feedback right then and there, be able to talk a little bit about it and give feedback. So to the first question, families responded that reading comprehension was really a great priority of theirs, as well as being able to transfer skills, the reading and writing skills, from their native language over into English, as we know that to be the best practice, right? Not to abandon your first language, but to really leverage that first language in order to gain understanding of your new language. The second question, parents prioritize more frequent updates on their child's progress and understanding why assignments are important to their children's education and their growth. And we certainly have some great plans, I think, in place that I'll present to you about how we think we can accomplish that. And then the clear preference on the- And then the clear preference on the third question about choosing curriculum was that topics need to be relevant and interesting to students and that we need to make sure that our lessons help students understand the world that they are living in, which again, is the most interesting and relevant thing that we can provide to our students. And 88% of Spanish-speaking families selected this as their top choice. So this information is going to be used by our EPS GLEAM team of educators who are building leaders who are selecting a middle school ELA curriculum. They will also be leading small family focus groups as well and doing multiple surveys, again, to get more feedback. And hopefully, if this process is successful, we will be replicating this process as we choose more curriculum moving forward. So supporting mental health is obviously a huge priority of ours right now. And I want to thank our Selwell Coordinator, who's here with us today, Patrick Quigley, who's been working on these two new initiatives that we have amongst many, many others. The first is a certification opportunity in Mental Health First Aid. So this is a skill-based course that teaches participants how to identify, understand, and respond to mental health and substance abuse challenges. And the training features two components, one to two hours of a self-guided component and then a one-day in-person training. So we're going to be gearing these towards all of our school staff, providing them for our administrative assistants. Our teachers will be providing them at times of the day when, you know, it's going to be best served for each of our different groups. It is going to be a volunteer opportunity, but it's also going to be stipended for some of our teachers as well. Secondly, beginning in February, the EPS is launching a partnership with Walker Cares Professional, Professor Amy Ballin, to bring calming corners to our classrooms. What a calming corner is, is the quiet area in the classroom that has soft furnishings, soothing materials that help a student to de-escalate. The point of the calming corner is that it is not meant to be a punitive measure where you're sending a student to a corner, but rather, they are actually choosing, when they realize that they are dysregulated, choosing to get up, go to that corner. They will have strategies that they are learning that are available to them in order to kind of regulate themselves. So through this professional development, our teachers or educators will be earning their 11 professional development points if they do the entire sequence. And they also will be earning a $750 grant to create the calming corner because it does cost money to create the furnishings. And they will also be stipended for the time outside of the school day that it will require in order for them to bring together this calming corner. So we're looking forward to that. And I am excited to share with you the results of those efforts. As far as a cleaning update, Mr. Bond has been keeping me very updated on what we're doing to make sure that our buildings are places that we can be proud of and that they are clean. So many of the measures that I had already spoken to you about in December have already been completed. So for example, during weekends, we've done deep cleans of the buildings. We did hire a new custodian who started on December 6th and joined our overnight staff. And also during the break, our custodians painted the auditorium stage. They cleaned and refinished tile floors and corridors on the first, second, and fifth floors in this building and also in some of our other buildings as well where it was needed. They thoroughly swept, washed every room, disinfected all surfaces, machine cleaned the rooms as well, and also painted the restroom walls because we know our restrooms have had a lot of wear and tear this year. And so I just want to thank again our custodians for all that they've been doing in order to make sure that our schools are places that our whole community is proud of and that our students are proud to learn in. So for our vaccination rates, they do continue to climb forward or climb upward slowly. So as you can see from this slide, our numbers are generally on par with the states. The exception is among our 5 to 11-year-olds. So Everett's first dose percentage for that category is just 27%, while only 14.2% are actually fully vaccinated. It is worth noting that the rates in this category are obviously low. Again, this is the most recently offered vaccination. So we do know, and we've seen the trends in the past, that these will go upward as we continue to educate everyone and provide opportunities for vaccines. I think most encouraging here are the high percentages of individuals between the ages of 16 and 19 who've received not only their first dose, but also their second dose. We are actually slightly above the state in both of those areas. So again, I think that that's a really promising indicator that hopefully our other age groups will follow suit because that's not exactly what it looked like when, again, the vaccinations had first come out. So I do feel very optimistic that we'll trend in the right direction. So this is a pretty jarring slide. I know I present this at every meeting, and we get to see sort of the monthly rates of students. Or not students, again, this is any 0 to 19 age children, child in Everett. So they don't all attend the Everett Public Schools. But this has been a really good piece of information for us to get from our local health department to give us sort of a sense of where we are. So I will say that this was, and I'm sure anecdotally you all have heard about what January has looked like in all school systems across the state. And it certainly didn't look any different for us. We had a huge spike in cases, and that's only the first half of January. It was certainly concerning enough to where I did contact DESI to see if maybe we might be eligible to transfer over to remote learning and in any capacity, maybe whether it was hybrid, maybe it was for just some grade, some schools. They did, you know, I know that bad news is sort of relative here, but they did say that we were actually on par. And again, it is trending around the state that we're no different than any other states. They did look very closely with us at our numbers, especially here at the high school, which were the greatest. And really, they tend to tier out that support anyway. They wouldn't just have us go straight to remote learning. They would actually take a multi-tiered approach where first, they would come in and have a two-hour delay, test everybody. Then they would determine if we would even qualify to go remote. What I will say is of all of the school districts that have attempted this, where they have been able to provide support, only one in the state has actually had to do a shutdown. We did not have to go through all of these measures. And I do again, want to thank the Health and Wellness Team and all of our amazing educators because I know it's been a really, really challenging time. But we do hope that again, these numbers are going to trend in the right direction. We did just, for sake of comparison, look at Chelsea, which was comparable to us throughout the pandemic as far as their positivity numbers. And proportionately, our numbers are slightly worse than the state and are actually slightly worse than Chelsea, which is why I actually reached out to DESI to make sure we were okay. But interestingly, the proportionality also matches the level of vaccination. So for example, while Chelsea's proportionality is a little better in this area, they also have a higher level of vaccinations. So I think what we're seeing here, again, is just the correlation between making sure that all of our educators and our citizens are vaccinated and that that's the best way, along with masks and everything else we're doing, to ensure that we are stopping the spread. And again, to that same, to that same point about the things that we have been doing, because again, I think leading up to the holiday break, I felt like we were in a good rhythm. Things were going in the right direction. Obviously, that has changed over the last few weeks. We definitely, again, went from case counts of four to five per day to about 30. So, you know, we've been doing everything we can in order to make sure that we are mitigating the spread. We are also, we purchased test kits. And I know that we got news today that we'll be receiving test kits from DESI, but we wanted to be proactive. We purchased test kits so that we would have enough for families, for our staff and our students, to take them home both for February and April break and trying to anticipate what we didn't anticipate before the December break. We also continue to partner with MGH for our vaccine clinics. We held one just last week at the Whittier. And since January 3rd, we have distributed more than 58,000 masks, many of which came to us from DESI. So we thank them for, again, their support and all of the materials that they've been providing us. And also, again, I just can't say enough that these last three weeks, our staff really has had to, you know, be more flexible, I think, than we've had to be during this entire pandemic. Our school leaders have really figured out ways to support students, to support staff. We've had high absences, not only for our students, but also for our staff. It's been pretty amazing to see how our school communities and how our school leaders have really come together to make it work. It has not been perfect. It's not exactly what we want to see. But I will certainly commend every single person in this district who I don't think could be working any harder than they are to really just try to make sure that we are supporting our students and our families as best as we possibly can. And again, just as a reminder, we do continue to have our vaccine clinics. We will be having one, we did have one last week at the Whittier School. And also just a reminder too, because the city has been very great about making sure that there are vaccine clinics. So the next one is available at Pope John this Saturday, January 23rd, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And this walk-in clinic is for first doses, second doses, and boosters, like all of them have been up until now. So again, I encourage anybody who hasn't been vaccinated to make sure to make it over to Pope John. Also, I just wanted to thank an anonymous donor. This is actually the same anonymous donor we've had since the beginning of the pandemic, who still does not want to be named. Hopefully, he and his son, who have been providing masks around the state throughout the entire pandemic, or at least watching, so that they can get this thanks. And it's an incredibly selfless thing for them to be doing. They drive around with their, you know, their truck and hand boxes and boxes of masks to anybody, any, you know, meeting communities. And they certainly have let us know that, well, I can't name him. I have his cell phone number. I know his name, and I can text him if we need more masks. That's really wonderful. And of course, we're purchasing masks. But again, it's really amazing to see all of these wonderful philanthropists come out of the woodworks during something like this. And again, I hope he's watching and can at least get the thank you here from this wonderful body. So we have, as always, we have a lot of COVID updates. So as of last week, there have been a couple new changes. One is that our Office of Human Resources actually has created a quick online form because we have had a lot of absences so that our staff can go ahead and like go onto the form, provide all of their documentation, upload them, just to again, streamline that process as with those absences increased. Also, as I'm sure you've heard, the mandatory quarantine period went from 10 days to five days. And I want to thank the local DPH for supporting us in that transition. As you know, we did not start with the five-day when everybody else did. We wanted to be a little bit cautious in how we approached that. But we have now switched over to the five days, and that will certainly help us with our staffing, with student attendance, especially for those cases that are asymptomatic. Also, the Greater Boston League has instituted last week a two-person limit for spectators at sporting events. And I think that makes perfect sense. We're going to do an update. I'm not really sure how to get that back. But so, let's see. So yes, the two guests per student athlete at all games. And finally, DESI has extended the mask mandate into February, which I think we had all expected and I think is really prudent at this time. As of just today, there were a lot of other COVID updates. So we are going to be able to take part in a program in which districts can provide at-home rapid COVID tests for students and staff to take home on a weekly basis. Now, we haven't gotten full information. They'll be giving us information tomorrow on what that rollout's going to look like so that I can provide details on where these will be distributed, how they'll be distributed. So that information will be forthcoming. And again, I want to thank DESI for supporting us in this transition. Also, our Health and Wellness Team has been in contact with our Everett Board of Health, again, with taking part in this new testing initiative, which we have to initiate. It's not for all, it's just for those who state that they want to do so. And thank, thank you, Josh. And while we continue to test asymptomatic individuals in our schools, the at-home kits will also enable us to move away from the time-consuming contact tracing and test and state options. So that will be a slow transition out. However, that has been taking a huge amount of time from all schools, all districts. And I think that's what DESI probably heard the loudest, is that it maybe wasn't as effective as it could be. So take-home tests may be a more efficient way to go about this. So again, I think this represents a really timely change that is certainly going to help our daily operations. And I think it makes sense too, as far as just the overall safety of our schools. I do think that they have presented a lot of data too to demonstrate the spread in schools actually still being, while it is high, still being lower than it is overall in the state. So I think our schools are a safe place for our students to be. And then finally, I mean, there are so many stories like this, but I did want to at least provide this one. Like I said, our educators, our staff, our school leaders, everybody has really just been so incredible in how they've adjusted to the last three weeks that again, I think have been by far the most challenging that we have met. And so I get to hear a lot of these stories every day, and I wanted to share this one from the Lafayette that Dave Brady had just sent. As he wrote, Ms. Clark arrives every day before 7:00 AM and always checks in to see if we need any help around the office or to watch students that might have been dropped off early. Last month, I noticed her leaving the school building around 7:20 AM each morning, and I asked her where she was going. She told me that she was going to walk a student to school. Ms. Clark found out that the student's mother had a broken foot and no transportation to get her son to school. Every morning for a month, she would walk the student to school. This week, Ms. Clark has come down every morning to help the students in the cafeteria that arrive before 7:45. So, you know, that just warmed my heart. And again, with all of these numbers, all this data that we look at constantly, it's, I feel like always nice to bring it down to the human level just to remember all of the incredible things, these, you know, these small but huge things that our staff are doing every day to make it through, to support our families and to really get through this pandemic stronger than I think we were before. Thank you.
So I guess, so you gave the update on the contracted cleaning services?
No, I actually have update on the bid itself as a separate item. So I'll take any questions on the superintendent's update first or? And then I can go on to that.
Okay.
If that's all right.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Mrs. Sonny.
Madam Superintendent, on the government changing five to 10 days, from 10 to five, if someone has to be out more than five days being sick with COVID, are we making them use their sick time? Are we going through the government reimbursement?
So we are doing the government reimbursement, which allows for five days. So this has been a program that we've had throughout the pandemic. It's changed in the number of days that we've had allotted. We do apply for reimbursement, which is why we do ask staff for proof of positive results, which is not always, you know, very convenient to get, especially when you're taking at-home tests. But it is something that we are required to do in order to get the state reimbursement. So you can, if you do not provide, you know, the proof of that, you would have to take your sick time. And anything above the five days, you also do have to take sick time. However, the five days is not simply for yourself being positive. It can also be if you demonstrate that someone that you care for. So if your child, it was a close contact or exposed, and you have that letter, you can provide that as well, or if you were taking care of any other dependent. So there are several different criterion that you can get those days allotted to you. And again, it kind of all goes through HR. It depends, every circumstance is slightly different. But we certainly have been abiding by all of the state guidelines around that to make sure that we're getting reimbursed.
Right. Myself, I end up being longer than five days. And my work was very nice that they covered me a few extra days. But I do know the five days changed and that some people need longer to heal from COVID because it can get worse.
Absolutely. And in fact, I mean, I think this is a great example too, where our local DPH, and I certainly didn't disagree that we wanted to take a more conservative approach when it came to coming back to school to kind of see how things went. So we stuck with the 10 days when others were still at five. And so yes, anything above the five days was required to be taken from people's sick time. So it's another great reason that, you know, it definitely helps for us to be at the five days.
That's good that, like, we're getting reimbursement from the state and seeing that helping the staff, you know, with that. Thank you on that.
Any other questions of the superintendent? Seeing none, Superintendent, do you want to continue?
Absolutely. So item number two is an update on the contracted cleaning services. So I gave an update just on the cleaning itself, but I did want to give you an update. The last month, as you know, we received your approval to go out to bid for contracted cleaning services for Everett High School. We did act quickly. We received and reviewed three. We received and reviewed three bids, and the lowest bid that was submitted was by MP Services. They may sound familiar. We had them in the past. So they will be beginning on February 1st. This will have the added benefit too of that our overnight crew that is working here at Everett High School will be freed up to now go to our other schools. Again, you know, the domino effect of all of our schools getting cleaner. So MP has worked again at EHS in the past, which certainly is helpful, because they know sort of the lay of the land here. And they also have vast experience in other school districts as well. The cost is going to be $27,000 per month. We have chosen the six-night-a-week option. That was the most cost-effective. So this will be $135,000 through the end of this school year. And it's $330,000 for the year after, or $340,000 for the year after that, approximately. And that is on par with what we were paying before.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the superintendent. Superintendent, who was the committee who reviewed those proposals? And recommended that final application?
Absolutely. That was the, a committee put together by Steve Bond, and he had several different members on that committee. And he can come and speak to that a little bit more if you want to know who was on it. I believe Mr. Obramsky was on it. That being said, it is a little bit different because it's the lowest bidder. It's not necessarily you're grading on a rubric. So it doesn't, the, the team isn't as extensive as when we do the rubric-based, where we have to go through and grade based on criteria. This was really more cost-based. And so the, but the recommendation was given over to me by Mr. Bond and Mr. Obramsky.
So the process was led by our operations team?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Anybody else have any questions of the superintendent? Nobody? I guess we'll, uh, vote on the, to safely dispose of the broken Chromebooks?
So yes, so item number three is to request permission to safely dispose of the broken Chromebooks. So again, these requests come up from time to time, as we regularly do need to replace and update our technology. In this case, the Chromebooks, you received a list of the Chromebooks and the serial numbers. These ones are beyond repair. They're no longer of any use to our students, and none of them are either suitable to donate. So this action does not create a technology deficit amongst our students. They are still all one-to-one Chromebook.
I'll accept the motion. Mrs. Mrs. Lemon?
Just a question. Had we looked into, I know we were in the past going to look into recycling opportunities for these electronics? Have there been any update on that?
So we did actually look into the recycling opportunities for our textbooks and other materials. There's actually quite a bit of, there's a quite a long process that you have to go through, and it, and I, I think we can even invite up Mr. Obramsky to speak to it a little bit more, that there's certain things you can and cannot donate. There's actually a lot more restrictions on it than you would think. You would think people would be wanting to take your free stuff, but actually, that's not, it's not as simple as that. And so when we were trying to donate textbooks last year, I think Ms. Murray had actually asked if we could donate them. We went through quite an extensive process and found that it would actually, we would just need to dispose of them instead. I know that there are some programs for technology though, and I don't know that we've looked into those, because that was specifically for textbooks. So we can certainly look into the, that before we, before we dispose of these.
If I could put that in the form of a motion to...
Second the motion to lay this item on the table?
To refer to the administration to investigate recycling opportunities for these...
Okay, refer to the administration to look into recycling opportunities and report back at our next meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
All right. Thank you. And the last item is item number four, which is acceptance of an anonymous donation of 21,565 masks for students and staff. Those were the ones that I referred to in the update.
To accept the donation in a letter of thanks?
I'll second.
Motion is made in second to accept the donation and let her thanks be sent to the anonymous donor? Okay then. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. So on to Roman numeral six, item submitted by school committee members. Item number one is to request a scheduled standing bimonthly student advisory committee meetings with the committee as a whole for the remainder of the academic year in accordance with MGL Part 1, Title 12, Chapter 71, Section 38m. And this was submitted by Ms. Lambert.
Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would request, I would request to make a motion to approve and coordinate a schedule with the high school administration team of our student advisory committee. And just to read, it is master general law that a student advisory committee to consist of five members be composed of students selected by the student body, which has been done, and that the school committee of every city, town, and regional school district meets at least once every other month during the month school is in session. So I think that's an important piece to meet with the whole, and I'd ask that we do that as a committee of the whole.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. McLaughlin? Oh, you have a question? Oh, Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I don't know if I can ask Ms. Lambert, who is a member of committee, a question, but I can ask one of you.
Yes, you can.
Have, have these meetings been held in previous years? So Mr. Barrows?
I'm having trouble hearing. I apologize.
Me too. I'm having trouble here.
I apologize. I'm sorry about that. No, my question to Ms. Lambert from Mr. Barrows was, has, have these meetings been held in previous years? And is there any sort of an outline of the sort of conversation of where, so that we're not, you know, if we're not starting from scratch, we can kind of pick up the new year and continue the conversations of where they may have been last year or previous years from there?
We, we have had them in the past, but then due to COVID, and then reintegrating at the beginning of the school year, they were not held, generally, they were held in person. And we had two prior to going remote. You know, and at the time, students had brought up, they were looking for more recycling opportunities within the school, ironically, as part of it, you know, I always keep that in mind. You know, so the topic's really driven by the students and their advisory committee. They're representative for the entire student body of the Everett Public Schools. So it's not just their personal views, but they, that's why they're elected, is to, just like us, reach out to their constituency and bring issues that impact student environment and topics. And Ms. Dana Lewis, who is, you know, been a longstanding advisory committee member, and we do have several other students that were elected.
This looks there.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. So yeah, these advisory moves, the students are, of the, like, that's their duty to really
be that more student voice. So I do think it is a good idea to actually, you know, approve this, so that we do get more student perspective on what their, their needs are.
I fully agree with Ms. Lewis. I was just wondering if they had been done previously, so that we could kind of pick up the conversations where they, so we weren't, you know, being redundant or, or having the same conversation over, so we could continue. But more voices at the table, more opportunity for students to be heard, that's probably all of our goal. So I'm excited to see these meetings be had bimonthly. Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no debate, no further debate, I'll entertain a motion to, um, Fable Action.
Second the motion?
Is this a rule change? Should we go? No? Okay.
No, it was referred to the high school administration and our body to coordinate the meetings.
All right. Refer to the high school administration, as well as the chairman of this body to coordinate some meetings going forward. Exciting times. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mrs. Lambert, Ms. Lambert.
Thank you. So item number two is to designate an individual committee member to approve bills and payroll according to MGL Part 1, Title 6, Chapter 41, Section 56. And this was submitted by Ms. Lambert.
Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this was just, we had elected to do this last year, coterminously, with the city council, who also approved such actions, so that we could expedite bills and payroll by having one person responsible for signing, in addition to the chair, chief finance officer, and the superintendent. I would make a motion to send to the Rules, Policy, and Procedures Subcommittee for further discussion.
I'll second.
Motion is made in second to refer this matter to the Rules, Policies, and Procedures Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. It has been so referred.
Thank you. Item number three is to request an update regarding new Student Opportunity Act reporting requirements and community input opportunities to revisit the initial plan with understanding of COVID-19 impacts. And this was submitted by Ms. Lambert.
Mrs. Lemon, Ms. Lemon, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So when the Student Opportunity Act was first rolled out in the winter of 2020, hard to believe, we held community meetings in order to inform the, the plans for our Student Opportunity Act money. Then COVID happened. And we're finally in a space where the Student Opportunity Act is due to finally be implemented. And I know that the commissioner has asked for new plans, because the past two years have changed everything. So I was just hoping for an update on that timeline and how we can bring the community into those conversations to kind of shape, because I, I think not only our schools have changed, but our community has as well. If I could refer that to, ask the superintendent for that update.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is made in second to refer this item to the school superintendent for an update.
Would you like me to give a short update now? Okay, and then I can provide a presentation later, just on the timeline?
Sure.
Okay. So the new SOA amendment, as Ms. Lambert was speaking about, is due April 1st. And the goal of the SOA is to narrow the opportunity gaps amongst our subgroups. So the new SOA reporting requirements are that the original SOA plan, which we did submit, even though COVID had hit, should be revisited to re-engage stakeholders. So there were surveys that were given out before. But again, now that the students' needs have changed so much, now that there are new opportunities, we want to provide them, that it is a good time for us to re-engage the community and submit April 1st. So what we'll be doing is, we will be reaching out to families via a survey that is similar to the ESAR survey that they receive, but slightly different. And I think what's nice about that process is that we can certainly improve upon what we did. We certainly learned some lessons when we did the ESAR survey. So I think we can be a little bit more intentional with how we get it out, to whom we get it out, making sure that we also don't just have the survey, but that we provide some opportunities for in-person feedback as well, similar to what we did at the LPAC meeting, but with other focus groups, and very similar to how we're going to be doing with our curriculum teams as well. So I will come to this body to provide an update before we submit our amendment, to let you know what the feedback is that we've gotten.
If I may, would it be possible to utilize our family liaisons? Because I know that we had great response in native languages, and we were able to meet in person, so a little bit differently, but even if, I think the Zoom meetings have been well attended. So I would just make that recommendation as a committee member and concerned citizen.
Yeah, would be a great idea. And I think it would be great too, if we can offer both in-person and Zoom opportunities, because I think we see that, you know, we, we get a different result from both, and it's nice to have both options. So absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. So item number four is to discuss the rationale for closing of the print shop at Everett High School, as well as how the print shop requests are being filled as a result of the print shop being closed. This was submitted by Ms. Cardello, Mr. McLaughlin, and Ms. Sarnie.
Ms. Sarnie?
Madam Superintendent, can you explain, I just have a few questions. Why did we, when did we close the print shop, and why?
So we closed the print shop, I'm not actually sure how many months ago, but a few months ago, maybe two months ago. And I do want to be...
No, no.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Oh, no, I'm putting my hand up for next.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
You want me to say hi? I don't know.
No. No, I don't.
All right.
So the print shop, and I do just want to be specific in the fact that the print shop is not one of our career and technical education shops, right? So I think that was originally the intent. I think that, that may originally have even been the format of it. However, for a while, it's, it's been a copy center, a print center. So it was not something we were using for teaching and learning purposes, and it did not result in a reduction in staff. It also has, does not hinder our ability to make copies and print copies. In fact, we easily and happily were able to process the request for the inauguration programs that were requested by the city. So we're still able to print color copies and provide those print requests. And obviously, staff are also free to make copies of documents, and actually, we're opening the print center for that, to be available to all staff. And that's for flyers, learning materials, in their respective buildings. And we also have regional printers in all of the respective buildings as well. So as has always been the case, we do print certain items in-house, but we also have always contracted out for other jobs too. Our handbooks have always been vended out. And, and there are some items that I, I went to look sort of at what has been put out in the past. I believe in the past, they used to do a lot of homecoming materials that were sent out to a vendor. I don't think we've done those in a while. But we do have sort of a mixture of what's done in-house and what we send out. And it really depends on, obviously, the volume and the kind of print that we want. So for some of those, like the handbook, that was really large and requires a certain amount of binding, those were sent out even prior.
So the, the staffing that we had in the print shop at the time, how many do we have, and what happened to the staff that were working in the print shop a few months ago there?
So they were moved to another position.
So they, they didn't get let go or anything?
No.
Is it costing us more money now, outsourcing it?
No. And in fact, if I, if I may, you know, there wasn't a whole lot of data kept on the print shop in the past. We did start keeping data this year. And in keeping the data, we did find that it was not incredibly efficient. If I can give a couple of examples, one example is that there was a request put in for an eight-and-a-half-by-11 color flyer, one. And that would be printed and then delivered from the high school to another school building by a custodian. So not only was it not a great use of resources and time of a staff member that was assigned just to the print shop, but it was also not a great use of our custodians, who were not meant to be couriers, right? So, so part of the impetus for closing the print shop was a lot of the deliveries that were having to happen with the, you know, print, like, copies that could be made in your own building, right? So that was one example. Another concerning example was copies that were being made of curriculum that was copyrighted. So, you know, I'm, I don't, you know, I don't want to, you know, out us for doing the wrong thing, but you're not supposed to copy curriculum that's, that's copyrighted. And so I think there were several reasons that I think, you know, and in looking at the data, it was, it just wasn't, there were better uses. And again, I, you know, I'm all about efficiency and streamlining. I think it was, you know, there were multiple reasons for not shutting it, but changing the way that it was structured.
Now, the print shop, can that be used as a vocational classroom as well?
Yeah, I think that it should, and that's something we should consider bringing back, potentially having it so that it is more student-facing than simply one staff member who's just manning it. So that is certainly a conversation we're having, and something I'm open to. And, and we will be exploring it. I've started to ask more questions about what did that look like in the past? How many students are, you know, interested in a pathway like that? And so we are looking into that. So yes, there's also the other opportunity that we've thought of too, is if it does not require an entire pathway, for example, is could it be an internship or a life skill that's done either during school or by a specific program, or after school too?
Okay. Thank you so much. Mr. Marcus?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. The thing nowadays, instead of using printing or everything, it's called DocuTech Centers, you know? And wouldn't it be wise if we put one in here, and we had the kids work on it, they could do it jobs for people outside of the high school? And what they would learn on, because everybody's not going to college, and they have to have some kind of skill, like automotive, that, electricity, woodworking. So I'm just saying, with that space down there, if we could use that as a DocuTech Center, and possibly add other things on that are in this piece of business. But, you know, it's very important, because these kids need, you know... know, it's very important because these kids need, you know, places to go to work. Now, in the past, that's been a big opportunity for you.
Absolutely. So like I said, we're happy to explore that. We've started to...
Maybe I write you a note, though, and you can look at it and see if it's a possibility.
So, that sounds great.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Madam Chairwoman, through you, through Madam Superintendent, Madam Superintendent, hit the nail right on the head on this one. And that's what I was going to, why I put my name on this. As a student in the early 2000s, I was involved in print shop, and we had spoken about that. It was so crucial to our vocational education. And Mr. Bovier and Mr. Lyden, I remember all those gentlemen. And I really, I learned a lot from that program. And if it's not a print shop for one copy at a time, which we talked about, right, but if we can reincorporate it into either CTE program or a life science skill for a student, so I'm really excited to see that you are thinking along those terms. And that's why I had thought that we'd have this conversation because just firsthand experience of being a student and being a part of that, I spent so much extracurricular time after school volunteering to get materials for all different schools and throughout the years. And I saw the importance of that program. And I saw what it did for students. And I know many students, my former classmates, who have gone on to the printing world because of that program, who have done different aspects of, you know, of copying and so forth. So I am glad to see that you are thinking along the lines of bringing it back either as a CTE program or a life skill for students. And that's the reason why I put my name on this. Talking with my colleagues, we thought we'd at least have the conversation to see where we could reinvent the program. Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
I have, Mrs. Cadillo?
Thank you, and through you to the Superintendent. Most of my, most of my questions and concerns have already been answered by my colleagues to the Superintendent. But do we have printers in all of our buildings? Is that correct?
Yes. So we've moved to a regional printer model, which is what you see in most school districts. So rather than having printers in every classroom, you have regional printers that you send your copies to, your prints to.
Okay. So would that be like in the secretary's office, the principal's office?
Depends on the makeup of the school building, you know, again, you want some...
So every school has that?
Yes, yes, or more than one.
Okay. Now, when this, when the print shop closed, one of the biggest concerns that I was getting calls on, and I had no idea about it, and I really didn't know, honestly, all that went on in the print shop, was the fact that staff wasn't notified, and they were looking like, where's the print shop? And sit there, found out about the print shop when we were taking the tour of the high school one day, and that it had been closed. So it wasn't, well, I don't know whose job it was. I don't know whose decision it was, the finality of closing it, or not closing it, or just keeping it open for certain things. So that has gone out. Everybody knows of this now?
So thank you for that feedback. I will look more closely into the communication that's been put in around that. And if it hasn't, we'll make sure that it's communicated. When we did move to the regional printer model, the expectation was that you were to, you know, kind of manage your own copies. But we can certainly make sure that that is communicated more specifically.
How are we keeping track of what is done in-house so that we know? Does somebody put in a requisition when they want this now? I mean, was that being done in the past if they needed booklets made at the print shop?
I don't know how they requested it in the past because I asked for, were there trackers? So I instituted a Google form that, that then gathers the requests that then go through Steve Bond, go through the custodians, because again, they were being, they were being delivered. So I asked that we create a Google form, we start to track it so that we could see what was coming in, so that we could see if it was efficient, so we could see how many were coming. And I think, from what I saw, I think we closed it maybe in November, and I looked back, and there were like three requests in November. Also, as you know, like during the remote learning, we had zero requests for almost an entire year, so I have that data. But for before that, there's no actual tracked data on the requests that were put in.
One of the things they do know that they did out of the print shop was the, a lot of the stuff for graduation and prep for the awards nights and so forth. Is that going to be done per, how would that be done? Because that is all high school stuff. So does that all go through the high school into the office? And then who is responsible for doing that? Or would the print shop be open for that large amount of things? Or do you plan on sending us out to a vendor?
So we don't plan on sending it out to a vendor because, again, any materials that we have the capacity to do in the format that we want them in, and the graduation programs, I think, looked great, we will do them in-house. And we have several different staff members who support graduation, who would be able to support with the printing like they did last year.
So would that be done in the print shop?
Yes.
Where all the equipment is in there?
Yes.
So that won't go through the regional? That would be done?
No, no.
And that will be done by staff members?
Yes.
Those that are on the committee or so forth? Like the people that are on the committee for graduation and scholarship and all that stuff?
Yes, exactly.
So they would be actually doing that?
Correct.
Okay. Does that take them away from their actual jobs that they're doing? Because they know that they volunteered to help out with those projects, but what about...
I mean, we all lend a hand, right? And I think that those who are, we will have a larger graduation committee in order to support. Our administrators also, our APs, our principals, they all support as well. So I don't anticipate that it's going to be a heavy burden on, on the graduation committee.
The eight and a half by 11 colored printed form that you mentioned, was that the one that was done for the new after-school program to be put out in all the backpacks?
No, it was just a singular flyer.
A singular flyer, so just one flyer?
Right.
Okay. But why would we be responsible for doing the flyer for an after-school program?
No, I'm sorry. I don't know what was on the flyer. I'm saying that the flyer that was put out, that you, that I mentioned that was on the tracker?
Right.
Was just one flyer.
One flyer.
I don't remember the content of the flyer.
Okay, but there was...
It was actually submitted by a teacher, so I don't believe it was for our after-school program.
And that's why I'm asking, if you've been able to track, who would have requested that every public schools do a publication for an outside vendor? I mean, I didn't understand that, heard that one.
I don't think I understand the question. I'm sorry.
There was a flyer that went home in all the backpacks for our students that are in, to, you know, show them about the new alphabet. I couldn't think of the name of the program. And it was a color flyer. I believe it was in some red, white, and blue or something. And it was done at our print shop. And I didn't understand why that would be, because to me, that would be an expense, especially with the color print.
That's a great question. I actually don't know about this specific request, but I think it's a perfect example of why I think that we need to kind of do our stuff internally, and that we don't have requests going to a print shop for any staff member to have to decipher who should be allowed to request and who shouldn't.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. What's your pleasure? Mrs. Sarni, sorry.
I'd like to refer this to the Superintendent and look into utilizing the shop for future, maybe a program for the kids, teaching, and come back with us in a month or two when she has some information, what the cost factor would be, and maybe, you know, see what we can do with the print shop to help education.
Motion is made and seconded to send this to our school superintendent.
Can we have a roll call on that, please?
A roll call?
Please.
To place this and report back in 60 days on, what was that again?
Utilizing the school print shop for...
Oh, CTE.
What else she's fit to use it for?
Yes. I don't believe we'd be able to come back in 60 days with the full CTE program.
No.
Yeah. And also remember that requires staffing.
Right.
It requires a certain amount of square footage for any kind of programming. And I don't know that we have, from my understanding of the print shop at my previous school. You know, you have to have a certain amount of square footage for any shop to accommodate a certain number of students. So I think we'd have to look into that in order to see. And then we need to see if there's going to be interest, and if we can get multiple teachers, because you need at least two teachers, so certified teachers who could teach in the print shop. So I think that's a longer conversation, but we could certainly come back with a, some, after doing some exploration on a potential internship or life skills program.
That'd be great. That's great. Thank you.
Mrs. Cadillo?
Thank you. One more motion. Is it necessary to have additional insurance in a shop such as a print shop if we were to do it as part of the CTE program? Because you're using equipment, machinery, cutting things, so forth. So would that be something that would be?
Potentially. So we can, we will certainly look into all the requirements that, because this is a program that exists by, you know, DESI standards. So we could certainly, we would have to see what are all the requirements and make sure that we comply with them. I can say from also looking at the equipment down there that we would need to have more. I don't think that the equipment that we have down there would be able to accommodate a full class, a full CTE program with multiple grades. So I think that, you know, again, it's certainly something we could explore. Maybe it's something we explore for when we have an expansion of the high school, or, because I know that's something we're looking into as well. But I think, again, I think probably the most realistic exploration at this point would be the internship or life skills, and that that could be a longer exploration that we, we start considering. And again, we can look into what the DESI requirements are for a program like that, what the cost factors are, what we would need to build out. Again, square footage, the number of students we'd be able to accommodate, what the market is for teachers who teach that program, you know, we can make sure to look into all of that.
Thank you. One more thing, if I may share, the experience that I had when I went to Texas to the Dubisky Academies. The print shop was absolutely amazing. And what they had, instead of a certified teacher, they had somebody that became certified in that because he had owned his own print shop. He ran a print shop for 40 years. So he was able to do the bypass. And actually, his assistant was also there. Of course, it was the director, so that person was certified teacher and so forth. But what I saw there was absolutely amazing. What they were doing was they were taking outside orders from local businesses. The businesses paid for the product that they needed to use, but the school didn't make money off of, they didn't sell it, they just did the work. And it was an amazing program. But it probably took up something about almost the size of half the library in order to do this. And I noticed that there was quite a bit of interest because it also entailed a lot of computer work and CAD work. So it was a very interesting program, and it's not something that's going to happen over the next three months, that's for sure. But thank you for looking into it. Thank you for letting me share that.
Absolutely. So just because we tend to look at programs around us, there are several different programs even in the state that do offer this. And I would agree with exactly what you said. They are very large centers that are very high-tech, so they would require a good bit of investment. But I do think it'd be a worthy one if we have the space.
Thank you.
And if I could, from the chair, you know, we're trying, we're going to be, hopefully, by, by pulling this body at some point next, next week, no, we're going to vote tonight on establishing a new committee, which is the CTE Vocational Committee. So this could fall right into that. So motion is made and seconded to refer this item to the Superintendent for her update when available. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Wonderful. Thank you. So item number five is to place an immediate hiring freeze on all EPS positions that are not classroom-related for a period of 90 days. And that was submitted by Mr. McLaughlin.
First of all, can everybody hear me?
No, no.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Helen? Good evening. Everybody can hear me now, hopefully? Good. First of all, I would like to start by asking that we amend this piece to request from Superintendent Tihaliani a hiring plan for the positions that she feels need to be filled during the remainder of this school year. If she could provide that for us in the next 30 days, that way we can have an outline of where, what position she fills. I don't know if 30 days would be reasonable, Madam Superintendent?
They are all posted on TalentEd, which is our, that's where we post all of our, so any vacancies that we had that were put into our ESAR application and into our approved budget are all there. We do tend to try and repost to like bring them up to the top when we're, again, trying to get ESL teachers, trying to get cell well coordinators. We did get some folks who were actually just referred to us today that I do hope that we push, again, we kind of push everybody to the TalentEd site to apply. But that houses all of our vacancies.
Okay. So that, so that basically is the outline for your thought process on what we would need for the completion of the year?
Yes. In fact, it would have been wonderful if we could have hired those positions earlier in the year, you know? We certainly are seeing that there is a staffing shortage. I think I may have mentioned to you that for, you know, every, I don't know, five to 10 offers we put out, we get, you know, several rejections. And that's for multiple different reasons that actually have nothing to do with how wonderful the Everett Public Schools are, but really have to do with unemployment benefits and all kinds of different things. So we have spent an inordinate amount of time on our hiring, wonderful hiring committees have spent a lot of time screening resumes, doing interviews, doing query checks, background checks, making offers that, you know, sometimes do get taken, sometimes don't. But it's been an ongoing. And I'm sure, as you've seen across the state, I don't think we've seen a staffing shortage like this ever. So we've been actively recruiting and hiring and interviewing. And that's sort of, it's not just a 30-day plan, it's like a...
Revolving everything.
As quickly as we can do it, yeah.
You know, I got this idea because previous, a previous chairman had proposed this item, and it was unanimously supported by this body. And then a meeting later, he came forward and said, well, we need to hire a deputy superintendent. And the committee was able to support that motion. So this is not a set in stone type of emotion. This is just to give us an opportunity to look at where the department is going. There's four new members of this committee, as we all know, right? It gives us an opportunity to understand and catch up to our seasoned colleagues on this board, to be able to better understand the operations of the department. So that is the reason why I asked, again, not to stop any classroom teacher from being hired, I want to hire as many classroom student-directed positions as possible. If we could hire 50 of them tomorrow, I'd say let's hire all 50 of them tomorrow, right? This is just so that we can get an opportunity for new members, maybe the largest or one of the largest turnovers on the school committee in memory, at least in my memory, can have an opportunity to look at all of these different aspects going into the budget session. And that's why I said 90 days. It leads us into the next budget session, so that we can understand what we need and when we need it. It's not to say that Madam Superintendent Tihaliani can't come before us in two weeks and say, I need to hire X, Y, or Z. I'm sure not a colleague of ours would say no to her. And I stressed that to her when we did, when we did meet, we talked about that. And I said, if there's ever a request, I'm sure that it would be approved and supported with. But it gives us an opportunity to sort of catch up as the four new members that are coming into this committee. That is why the seat and I placed this forward. I'll yield the floor to my colleagues so that they can have an opportunity to speak on this. But this is not to stop classroom teachers or student directly related positions in our school department. Thank you.
Mrs. Lambert?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry. I think it's important to remember, even for the new school committee members, that our, our role is not operations. So even pausing to get caught up in operations is outside of our scope. We are a body that runs on policy governance. These are positions budgeted for, and it would make us unique in the state where every other district is desperately trying to hire. And we have positions open that we desperately need to fill. And to put any obstacle timeline would be a hindrance and an impact to our students, whether that be custodial, whether that be mental health, adjustment, you know, student supports, success coaches, any hindrance is another day, another week, that another district can take that candidate. So I cannot support this because one, it's outside of the scope of our role, and two, it would have a direct impact on our students and the environment that our students learn in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Mr. Mangan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Eric, do you support this in somewhat, but I would like to make an amendment. Eric, do you support this in somewhat, but I would like to make an amendment. I understand counsel. School committee members, the law and the, I certainly understand.
Certainly.
There we go. We have liftoff.
Certainly understand, um, um, school committee members, McLaughlin's concerns. I also understand what Ms. Lambert had just said. So I would like to make an amendment, and I know the superintendent had mentioned that there's already positions out there advertised, you're looking to get some people, you know, possibly fit in the pipeline now. So what I would like to do is possibly amend this to exclude already advertised positions would not be under this particular motion that Mr. McLaughlin's making. So anything that's out there now would certainly, if it's tomorrow or a couple of days from now, a couple of weeks, and there's something that's already in the pipeline, I don't want to prohibit the superintendent from being able to hire who she needs. So I would just make that in the, in the form of a motion.
Second.
Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to speak regarding this motion and this item and why I'm against it. We have a list of positions currently open, as the superintendent had mentioned. We have a staff shortage all over the country, not only the Everett Public Schools, but all over the country, school districts, companies, private companies, and, and we are trying to hire. At the same time, we need to look at our budget. So are those positions or the positions that we are trying to hire going over the budget? Are we going to the city council to ask for additional funding because we have extra positions that we are hiring? The answer to that, to my understanding, is no. I'll give you an example. I met recently with the family liaison lead, a manager, how we call her. She was desperately looking for bilingual family liaisons because two of her family liaisons had just left. They are not posted because they left, and she was desperately looking for bilingual family liaisons. So would the job of this body would be to put in the agenda, the superintendent requesting to hire two family liaisons because we put a freeze when those positions are already hired, they were not under that list? No, of course not. Our students need it. We are not asking for positions that are going beyond our budget. I'll give you another example. The budget team of the Everett Public Schools right now have raised over a million dollars on new funding to bring in new programs and new positions. I am in conversations with a founder at this moment to bring in $50,000 to hire someone for our schools to deal with mental health, to join the team that we already have. This is not a union position. This would be a one-year because it's a grant contract, and hopefully, as the previous funding for homeless that I've been bringing to the schools for the past three years, hopefully that founder will continue to fund, but this would be a one-year position. So if we get this grant, would I have to put that on the agenda to request, to wait for a meeting of the school committee, to, for the superintendent to request that we hire a person for a grant that we just had? That's not the job of this body. What I would recommend is if the new members are concerned about the budget, what we have, need, as a finance team, send an item to the finance committee, meet with the superintendent, and try to find out what is the current situation financially of the Everett Public Schools. We have a budget of X. Where are we with, under that budget? We are in the month of June, in January, we chose June, we are in the month of, of January, so it's mid-year on our fiscal year. So superintendent, show us the numbers. Invite our CFO, which I'm sure she's here tonight, she can answer that question right now, and tell us where we are with our budget, what projections we have, instead of changing something or putting a hiring freeze when the superintendent's not coming before us to ask, to ask for positions that are actually not even there, or to have this funding that I'm about, I'm about to bring and others that our grant team is bringing to come before us to ask to hire a family liaison or to ask to hire that. Our students need it immediately. It's for us to wait two weeks to go on this, this, okay, you can hire this, no, you cannot hire that. It's not going over the budget, if it's going over the budget, that's another story. This body needs to approve. But otherwise, our students need help at this moment, and we shouldn't be putting a freeze or a stop or any of these requests when the need is there, when the money is there. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I'm not mistaken, Mr. McLaughlin, did you say last year there was a hiring freeze?
I believe it was right before Madam Superintendent Tialiani had come in under the previous superintendent, there was one put on, put in place, and it was supported unanimously, and then it was retro, it was changed a week or two later to hire a different position. So.
Oh, and that really takes me to my vote tonight because I want to get clarification on that because if this was done and voted by the previous membership, I would like to know that, but I don't know that for certain. That's what I would need to know that. Thank you.
Mrs. Ms. Lambert?
I would like to ask that that information be brought forward because I believe that was actually prior administration, and it was in the situation where there was a budgeting issue, if I recall, but anecdotal information while we're taking a vote of this magnitude, I think is dangerous territory.
So I would, I would make a motion that we refer this to the finance committee for further review. I'll put that in a formal motion.
I'll second that. If you're ready.
Motion is made and seconded to send this to the finance committee. That's gonna be approved. Okay. Secretary, call the next hour of business.
Take a vote.
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote on it.
Okay. Roll call vote, Mr. O'Connor.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Caddillo?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
No.
Mr. LaMonica?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
On the mo, we've already voted.
I'd like to change my vote to no.
Okay.
So filed for reconsideration.
So moved.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just point of clarification.
As a point of clarification, I'd like to change my vote that I've just already asked to a no.
A no, okay.
So, so moved.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to be sure that this is going to finance with the amendment that was made.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, and that it's not hindering anything that's on the site for current hiring.
Send it to the finance committee. Or do you want to send it to rules and policies and procedures?
No, that's fine, finance is fine. But we had discussed, we're not touching anything that's on, I think that's called.
Yeah, we're gonna refer it to that committee that, as you can, I sent out the notices to everybody, and we're gonna vote on, we're not gonna be voting on those committees until next, the next meeting, because we have to have, we need to post them to the meeting, and then there's a seven-day window, and then obviously you have to vote on them at the next meeting. So you give the, you allow the school committee the opportunity with the seven days to review the amendments and the rule changes, and then we vote, or we can send them to committee too, all of the rules and policies that we're remanding, but does that answer your question?
No, I'm sorry, I'm just, there was so much talked about.
Ms. Caddillo?
Thank you.
It's not gonna affect anything, what's going on that's hiring right now?
That's what I want to be sure of. Any positions that are posted on Talent Ed site now will not be affected by this.
Not be affected, that's correct.
And also, Mr. Mangan made the amendment to say, to say that it would affect that. I just want clarification so that we move forward on what's now posted, correct? That is the way it's gonna be. So when this goes into committee, we're gonna discuss it, we'll find out where we are financially at that point and so forth and so on, but all things are go right now with what's ever posted, except for one thing that my colleague, Mr. Marconi Barrows, said about the two family liaisons. Are they not on the website for hire?
So if I may, thank you so much for, Mr. Elmete Barrows, for bringing that up because we, with so much going on in HR, with absences, there are actually not just a few resignations, but a few retirees that we have not yet posted. So they would not be on Talent Ed right now, so.
Then I.
But they are positions that exist within our budget, they are positions that exist within our school system, have been hired for before, so. And, and just as a point of clarification, I am unclear that, so then that's, well, maybe I can ask later about what's being discussed in committee versus what we're allowed to do at that moment, but I can ask that later.
Okay. I, I would like to see that as part of the, going forward now, not after it comes out of committee, but if we need family liaisons right now, those need to be posted before we put a freeze on anything.
So, so if I could from the chair, and I promised I wouldn't do this, but this is kind of like a procedural, I would, I've spoken to the superintendent about my concerns about this issue, and we send it to committee, but in the, in the meantime, we allow the superintendent to post these type of assignments to the.
Talent Ed.
Oh, okay. And, and move forward with those, those type of assignments, those type of positions, because obviously, and when we spoke, I said, listen, we're not looking to, to, you know, cut custodians, we're not looking to cut teachers, we love our teachers, we love our custodians, we love our parents, we love, but we're more concerned at the leadership level, at the senior administration, administrative level, and, and, you know, so that's, that's why, I mean, I'm in favor of, of, of this motion, but, and again, we've done it before in May of 2020, put a hiring freeze on. Yes, Mr. LaMonica?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
No, we did, we did put a hiring freeze on at one time, a few years back, you are correct. I think it was for 30 days.
Do you want to make a motion? 30 days? Yeah, Ms. McLaughlin.
Madam Chairwoman, if you want to, besides by all my colleagues, I'm happy to report it to committee this evening. I know this motion has been done in the past, and I know the chairman had done this, but to, to, to not have a disagreement about action, I think if we take further time, I think that that's the purpose of this committee, so that we look at different motions, we put different things in the committee, we have discussion, dialogue, we work with each other and come out with the best solution for every student and faculty member of the Everett Public Schools. I think that's why we're all here, I think that's why we have subcommittees, so we do this type of work. So I'm going, again, ask that it goes into finance committee with Mr. Mangan's recommend, amendment to the piece, which I seconded, that Superintendent Tialiani can go ahead and hire as she sees on the Talent Ed website or, or program, and if there's something else that she needs, we'll support her. We're gonna support whatever we need to do to help the children of Everett, but this is just a view of time, where we are moving forward. So make a motion, we prefer this to finance.
We voted. We did vote on that.
We did, correct.
Do you have a point of order?
I believe we were discussing.
No, we already took the vote.
But you allow Ms., my colleague to speak after the motion.
I allowed you to speak after too, after the vote.
No, I did not speak after the vote.
Yes, you did. Didn't I? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Barrows. I apologize, but I do.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to clarify that this was sent to, as my colleague was asking, this was sent to committee, no changes made, the committee will discuss, vote on it, and provide a recommendation to the full body for a final vote. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
All right. That's all I need to understand. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of sending this, oh, we already did, okay, we're gonna do, we're not gonna do this again.
Item number six. Item number six is to place an immediate on salary increases for all non-union, non-contractual positions for a period of 90 days.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Can you guys hear me in?
No.
Sorry. I was giving no, sorry. Again, I looked at this piece because in fairness, as of August 14th of 2021, the teachers' union contracts have not yet been settled, going back. It's only fair that we settle these contracts first, not that those individuals that don't have a contract won't be treated fairly or be given a raise, not saying that whatsoever. I would like to see that happen before any other raises are given. That is why I hope that this timeframe will work to be fair to everyone. This will ensure equity across all positions and all levels. Again, I am asking for favorable action on this piece so that we can look across the board equally and fairly for all positions on all levels. Thank you.
On the matter, do I, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded.
I have a question on the motion.
Sure.
Metro.
Madam Chairman, Madam Superintendent, do we have, know how many non-union or non-contractual positions that are up for renewal at this time? Do you know?
I was actually gonna send some clarifying questions about this after the meeting because I'm a little bit unsure what and to whom this is referring. Non-union slash non-contractual is unclear to me.
Mr. Barrows?
I think, Madam Chair, it is also unclear to me. If, if this sponsor can clarify, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand this piece.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Sorry for the delay. Madam Chairwoman, this is just basically what it says is what it is. Any individual that does not, is not union or does not have a contract in place for a pay raise increase, that we don't rush on an increase for that individual before we're able to settle teachers' union contracts and other contracts. I think we had that conversation last week. Am I, am I right, Madam Chairwoman? We discussed that. Madam Superintendent, I'm sorry.
So this language is, was amended since that conversation. Originally, I think it just said, place an immediate freeze on all salary increases for a position, for a period of 90 days. Then it said for all non-union positions for a period of 90 days. Then it got changed to slash, to non-contractual. So I'll be honest, amidst all of those changes, I guess I got confused about like, so then what, I, I didn't understand where we were going and, you know, just legally, I don't know, is the slash an or, is it an and? I am unsure, and that does matter, so.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion that we refer this piece to finance as well, where we referred item number five, and we can discuss this in further length in committee, and we will come out with a recommendation to the body. So I would put that in a formal motion, that we refer this to the finance committee also for further discussion.
Second the motion.
Motion is made and seconded to send this item to the finance committee for further review. Roll call vote, please. Roll call vote has been asked for, roll call vote. Who asked for the roll call?
Ms. Lambert.
Oh, okay, thank you. Roll call, Dave.
Mr. Barrows?
Is that, Madam Chair, is that to go to the finance committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Caddillo?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
No.
Mr. LaMonica?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes. What do we have? Mr. O'Connor? We have eight in the affirmative, one in the negative. The ayes have it. If so, move. Mr. O'Connor? We have eight in the affirmative, one in the negative. Uh, the ayes have it. If so, moved.
Thank you. Item number seven is that all upper management positions from assistant principals and higher provide a copy of their active certification for the job they are performing in time for the school committee meeting scheduled for Monday, February 28th, 2022, and that the superintendent of schools provide the school committee with a full and detailed report of all active certifications, as well as those who are not certified in time for the school committee meeting scheduled for Monday, February 28th, 2022. And this was submitted by Mr. McLaughlin.
Madam Chairwoman, thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Madam Chairwoman, this just follows in footsteps of my work as a city councilor. I requested this on the city side and I'm requesting it again on the school department side. This is nothing more than I did as a city councilor. We, we need to ensure that all Everett Public School administrators hold the appropriate professional licenses for positions they currently hold. This will identify any staff that needs additional support to obtain or renew a required credential. We all know the times that we've just lived through with COVID. Something could have slipped through, something could have been, been canceled and they forgot to go back and do it. The life that the, the world has been in for the last number of years, things could slip through the cracks very easily and, and just accidentally be overlooked. So I would ask for favorable action on this, that the superintendent obtain these credentials and are able to provide them to us as a body for upper management of the school department on the meeting of February 28th. I ask for favorable action on the motion.
Mrs. Lamond?
Um, while I have no issue with this request, I do just want in the spirit of collegiality and education, let you know that this is available on the DOE dot mass.edu website under licensure. And any member of the public, this is all public information. And I think it can get confusing because I have received questions about emergency licenses, which were issued via, during COVID at a higher rate than you would see. So I know that I've received questions from the public that they've been told that people are not certified when in fact they are. So there can be confusion and I would just, um, direct you to there if anybody or yourself has any questions.
Thank you.
Motion is made and seconded. Uh, Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regarding this, this item, I'm not against of providing licenses and then letting everyone know. I think we all should have, I, I was never against, so I'm not going to be against now. In fact, I work at the EG's office. I'm the last one who would be against any, any of this. My only concern is HR privacy. So as this is, this is different than be the head of a, a department when my colleague was a city councilor. We are talking about educators. We are, so this, this committee has the right to, to know as it is a public information, the whole public actually has the right to know. But I, I'm also cognizant of information that we put here regarding HR, human resources, and privacy laws. So perhaps this request could be sent to the committee and perhaps by the decision of the chair or not, go into an executive session to provide this information or even going to a, a subcommittee and provide that information on, on the subcommittee, making sure that there is no HR, uh, privacy laws, violations regarding any of this information. Again, I don't think that will be because as my colleague mentioned, this is on, this is public information. But just make sure that regarding this information, when she provides this information, that there is no HR concern. So what I'm asking is for our HR department, our HR director happens also to be a labor lawyer, to make sure that if there is any HR violations or, or privacy concerns that she addresses to, to, to this committee, to this body.
Ms. Sarni?
Thank you. We also can do another way without adding, putting names. We can just list how many with certifications, not qualified, what they need. And we can do it like that. We don't need to have names. That's something they can put together without...
Well, we, we can do that in executive session with the names.
But why, we, we don't need to know names. We, that's, that's HR issue. That's something privacy. We, we, that's up to the superintendent to make sure later on that they, they get their qualifications if they need it. But that if we would need to know where they, what they're missing, that's something we can find out how many out there if we know that are not certified or need extra classes or whatever. And then the superintendent can move forward to making sure they get their certifications. I don't think we need to put names out there, um, even, even in executive session. That's how I, I just think it's...
What is your motion?
So my motion was favorable action, but I definitely respect, uh, Mr. Barrows's opinion and, and thoughts on this process. And I think by doing this into an executive session, I think is the right approach. If Mr. Barrows is, uh, think that that is the right spot to go with this, I would make a motion for favorable action that we discuss this in executive session on the February 28th meeting of the school committee.
So moved.
The executive session is called by the chair, so it's up to her decision to do this.
Right. So I, I will, uh, put this on for an executive update at a February 28th meeting. Oops. Uh, sorry, Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the sponsor, if I could clarify also the intent. Because while I appreciate the suggestion that it be anonymized, I do want to point out that again, it's going outside of our scope into personnel issues that are typically handled by HR and our HR department in order to maintain certifications. So while it is public information, just the spirit of intent, I think matters in this as well.
Absolutely.
Just, Lambert, just transparency. I think everybody in the community wants to know that the individuals that are running or, or conducting our schools are certified and they have the credentials that they need to do whatever job they're performing. I think it just is, is a good level of transparency for everyone that calls ever at home.
I, I think that's why it's public information. But, you know, I, I just wanted to understand the intent of the information and what you, what the body, what you, your intent for the body to do with the information, I think matters as well.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I don't want to cross debate or cross dialogue, but...
No, you're, are you, are you okay?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It was directed to the sponsor.
Ms. Lambert, all, all it does is say that Mr. X or Mrs. Y needs, uh, needs this credential. And then we're able to ensure whatever support that we can offer to that individual employee to be able to, again, it's for transparency for our community to ensure that everyone has the correct credentials, licenses that, that are needed.
That's my, that's my concern is that when you step over the bounds of your, your duties, even in the spirit of support, it is a very gray area and it can get to be a slippery slope. So, you know, I'm just challenged in what support could this body provide? A personal development issue that would typically be handled by HR. I wouldn't, if, if I was part of a company, I wouldn't want the board of directors to dictate what my personal HR and personal development, you know, that's my responsibility. That's the HR department's responsibility and that's why personnel is outside of the scope of the school committee, according to ed reform. So I just wanted to understand the intent of the information because I'm not sure exactly how we can provide that support, but just wanted to clarify and I appreciate that.
Just to, from the chair, I just want to remind everybody that anybody works for a school system or a city...
Agreed.
Is, is a public official and is, uh, subject to, I mean, with their salaries, you know, people ask for their salaries and then throw it all, throw it in the newspaper.
And that was why I pointed out if there was a particular concern, because I had heard, you know, that there were particular concerns about particular people and it was very easy to point them to the website. The Department of Education and Secondary...
Can I ask a question through the chair to Ms. Lambert? So when they say, when they go on the website and it's approved?
Yep.
They have it approved. Um, does it show the waivers?
It, 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 it tells you what type of license it is, what the date, and whether it's professional, special, and that's all public information. There's also the phone number. I know I've called to clarify because I was, at the time, I was unsure about emergency licensure and that had to do with COVID. And, and it's been used, especially in this district, in the past a number of times. So, you know, but just from my personal understanding and my role as a committee member, when somebody brought an issue, not only did I direct it to the administration, as is our duty, but also for due diligence because it is public information, I was able to direct that person to the website, Department of Elementary and Secondary and for, um, Education and point them to licensure. It's easy enough to look up. It takes about five seconds.
Thank you for your, uh...
You're welcome.
Mr. Mangan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I understand some of her concerns, but, um, Lambert, but I totally disagree. I've served on boards before and it's actually our responsibility to know what's going on. We oversee the administration. And I served on the board of the Everett Housing Authorities. We had an administrator down there. And certainly if something like this came up, the, the administrator would have no problem, the executive director down there would have no problem getting that information to us. We're not saying we're going to do anything with new information. We just want to educate ourselves on who is and who isn't. Because I'm certainly know that the parents at home want to know that everybody's certainly certified. If there's reasons, whether it's COVID or anything else, that's fine. That will all be taken into consideration. But I've talked to many parents. I stood, I don't, I can't explain anybody else, but I stood out at the Lafayette School, you know, month and a half, two months, standing down there talking to parents on a daily basis when I was down there between seven and eight every morning. And that was one of the main concerns that was brought up to me. You know, is everybody certified? Do we make sure that we have the best and the brightest? Is everybody where they're supposed to be? Are they, do they, do they have the right certifications? That was one, something that was brought up to me. So I wholly, highly support this because that's what parents asked me when I was standing out there holding a sign all the time, running for the office and knocking on doors too, especially going around Ward 4. So I don't think there's anything wrong with asking. I don't think it's out outside our scope to ask who's certified and who's not. Thank you.
No more debate? Hearing none. Um, roll call vote, please. Roll call vote.
Madam Chair, there's been so many discussions. I'm already lost on the roll call vote here. Is, is the roll call vote just that you are, the administration, you provide a list which is public? And we, you're going to bring it, yeah?
In the February 28th meeting, I will ask for a, an executive session so we can go in with the superintendent and discuss the materials that she provides.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure. So...
Roll call vote.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Peddell?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
No.
Mr. LaLoy?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes. We have eight members in favor, one opposed. The ayes have it. That's been sent to our February 28th meeting for me to add to the agenda.
Thank you. Item number eight is that the superintendent of schools does not approve any contract extension for any non-union, non-contractual employee without first seeking prior approval from the school committee. And this was submitted by Mr. McLaughlin.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Madam Chairwoman, this piece was, again, just for transparency and for clarification so that we understood where we stood going into the next budget session. Um, I would like to amend this piece to include where contracts are time sensitive should come up. That the superintendent called Chair, Madam Chairwoman Cristiano to call a special meeting immediately to address that type of an issue. I'd like, I'd also like to request a copy of any extensions that have been given out in the last 30, 60 days, 90 days, whatever timeframe we want to put onto that. It'd be okay with me. Just, again, this is for transparency so that we as new members of this board, body and people at home can see where, where we stand as a whole for the committee. And to ensure that no contracts are unilaterally approved without the input of the school committee. The school committee should be aware of all contract extensions. Again, it's just transparency for people at home. Many people have stopped me. Many people have, have asked me these questions. Many of these questions this evening are not Mike McLaughlin question. They're questions that I had been asked as I have been around the city since I chose to come and be a candidate for the school committee. I would respectfully ask for favorable action on this motion. If we choose to go into committee, I support my colleague's wishes here this evening, as I have on my previous pieces. But those are my explanations on why I put this piece forward. Thank you. So I would like to ask for favorable action on this piece to, to, again, for, I'm, I'm sorry, to amend item eight, to add in a 90-day window. And I put that in a form of a motion as I had on the others for 90 days.
Motion is made and seconded to amend this to include 90-day window.
I'm sorry, seconded by whom, Madam Chair?
Huh?
Who seconded my motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Lamonica. Mr. Barrows?
Thank you. So can we, motion is seconded. So, thank you, Madam Chair. Regarding this motion and to my colleague who is new to the school committee, chapter 71 of Massachusetts General Law, section 37, describes the duties of school committee members. Section 37 says, "The school committee in each city and town, in each regional school district, shall have the power to select and to terminate the superintendent, shall review and approve budget for public education in the district, and shall establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district consistent with the requirements of law and statewide goals and standards established by the Board of Education." This item is out of the scope of school committee members. We have no role in asking, uh, uh, for, in asking the superintendent not to, to extend the contract of an employee, of another employee. Actually, the language on this, it says that the superintendent of schools does not approve any contract extension for any non-contractual employee. So if you do not have a contract, how are you going to approve an extension of a contract? So the language to me, Madam Chair, is already confused. And it's also completely, according to the law, Massachusetts General Law, out of the scope of school committee members. I do, uh, understand that there are members, um, of the, the public that perhaps might have asked, uh, my colleague as, as he mentioned. And I would refer those members of the public to the superintendent. Everyone has her cell phone and her email. But it's not under the scope of the responsibility of the job of school committee member.
Madam Chairwoman, I, I would like to rescind my motion and make a motion to refer item number eight back to sponsor at this time.
Motion is made and seconded to refer item eight back to sponsor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. You have so referred.
Thank you. Item number nine is to request to utilize uncommitted ESSR funds for the purpose of conducting an external operational audit of the Everett Public Schools. The objective of this operational audit is to review the efficiency of all departments and operations within the EPS to present a final report on the findings, recommendations, and projected costs or cost savings associated with the recommendations to the Everett School Committee. And this was submitted by Chairwoman Cristiano and Mr. McLaughlin.
Madam, Madam Chairwoman Cristiano, how's the flow?
Oh, this is a high. I don't know what I'm going to do here, Mike. Does everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, great. So, um, as, as we met previously mentioned, we have a relatively brand-new school committee with four new members present and we've had some, some turnover. And, and I liken it back to my former careers when I would move from company to company. We would always ask for an audit when we start. Just gives us a baseline. And so I'm just following that practice. And the reason I like to see an external audit, conduct an operational audit, is to include, um, direct administration, human resources, financial management, educational services, facilities, food services, transportation, technology, athletics, and extracurricular, curricular activities. Obviously, the overriding objective of this external operational audit is to assist the Everett Public Schools in its committee in ensuring and improving in its primary mission, the ca, the education of all us students. So what we're doing is we're not reinventing the wheel. There's a lot of school committees that come in and they ask for an operational audit. This is no... This is no different. This is not a forensic audit. We have no suspicion of anything, any malfeasance. But we just like to understand where we are and see where we may be able to make some changes or see some savings. So that's why I put this on the calendar. And I'd ask for a favorable motion.
I would second Madam Chairwoman's motion. And Ms. Le, I don't know if Ms. Lewis has the floor first?
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, Ms. Lambert.
I can.
Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I remember like when we had the ESER fund that I requested to our superintendent to send out this survey. And there was this survey that we sent out to the community, but also like to students as well. So I was wondering if we're considering those results in regards to the ESER survey? Because there were students who did fill that out. I think there was things like mental health, there was things like ST programs, like having more ST programs. There were just, there was a whole list of it. So I was wondering like if we're considering that when we are making decisions with the ESER funds.
Mr. Chair, can I speak?
Uh, Matt.
To you, Ms. Dinah.
Yes.
Lewis. The intent is to, is to, like, this is really like to understand from everyone. Teachers, school administrators, parents, students. And that's your question. Yeah, we want to include everybody in this. Because if we don't include everybody, we really can't make a sound assessment. And so that's going to be part of my objective. And, you know, obviously, I, as the chairman, I would name an ad hoc committee as the operational audit ad hoc committee to kind of go over the criteria of what we're looking for, the, you know, real clear objectives, scope. So we'd have input from the body as well as other members. Yes, Ms. Lambert? Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Lambert, you have the floor.
Not to cut you off. No, my first question is to the sponsor. Where specifically asked for uncommitted ESER funds, was diligent, due diligence made to find out if those are appropriate use of funds? If not, I would request that we refer this back to the sponsor to reach out to Matt Denninger from the department for a determination about the appropriate use of ESER funds. They have a very specific use.
ESER funds can be used for one-time expenditures.
The purpose, though, so do we have a determination from the department, on that?
We don't have a determination on this because we haven't approved it yet.
But, but if you're asking to utilize ESER funds, if you have a determination from the department?
I don't think we're putting a dollar amount on it this evening, right? We're just, we're just accepting the.
But, but in order to fund it, you're specifically asking for the funding source to be ESER. And while they can be used for one-time expenditures, they're very specific, it's a very specific grant. And I did not see audit in there. And I'm just asking that to protect the body. And before we commit any funds, I don't have a problem with an audit. That was one of the first things I asked for when I became a committee member. Not a problem, I have a problem with the funding source. And the ESER funds are committed, their grant money with a specific use. They can be one-time expenditures, but for an explicit use. So I'm just asking that we reach out to Matt Denninger from the department for a determination on the appropriate use of ESER funds for an independent audit.
So I'd like to make a motion to strike out, we use ESER funds, and we send it, and we move favorable action.
Ms. Sarni.
Madam Superintendent.
I have the microphone, I think, because of the TV.
Madam Superintendent, would the Chief Financial Officer know if this can be used, the ESER funds? Is that something she could be able to answer for us? Or where we have funds to, in the cost roughly for an audit would be? Would she know something like that?
Um, yes, I've actually consulted with her already. I, well, to start, we actually don't have any uncommitted ESER funds. When you put in your application, you commit for, like, when you put in for a grant, you're committing all of the funds, right? It's not like there's a leftover amount or something like that. So there are no uncommitted ESER funds, I think, is one clarification. Another is that we are getting further clarification from DESI on this because our understanding is that it would not be an appropriate use. But we would, again, if we can, if we can get a determination, I think that would be best just to make sure, because, again, with these grants, they have all of these different, all of these different requirements, all of these different guardrails. And I think the best thing to do is just to make sure they okay it. And that's actually what the application for a grant is. So you put in an application grant, you tell what all the funds are going to be committed, and then they approve the grant. So that's why we don't have any uncommitted ESER funds because we've got the grant approved already for all the funds we're committing.
My suggestion to the sponsors is probably put it to Finance Committee, look into a little further where the funds to cost, where would you use it from, and the cost to the audit as well. So this way the body can see what's going to cost us. Because, you know, we want to save money as well. And then also, maybe the superintendent can put something together as well, what the expenditures are already, to date an audit, not rough audit, internal audit.
I have Mr. Marcus, Mr. McLaughlin, and then Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I know what Mrs. Cristiano was talking about. I worked at the same place, the auditing. And, but I don't know what kind, what kind of audit did you have done here, the last one?
I, I think that they're referring to the Finance Commission Audit. I'm unsure, I didn't say that there was an audit. I said we applied for a grant.
Before you came.
Potentially. I'm not sure who talked about the audit. I didn't talk about the audit. So I don't know what audit they were referring to.
So if we could even go, I'm pretty sure you can still go to the State Auditor's Office if you really want them, they'll charge you, but not as much as, you know, a regular charge, I think, as to the public Kennedy. But we'd have to find out what kind of audit, financial, you know.
Well, this is an operational.
Operational, right. I mean, that's, you know, we'd have to see what really, you know, fits that we need. But somebody should contact them and see if they would come and do it. I think that's all they do, you know, those type of audits, or, you know that.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Ms. Chairwoman Cristiano, I think that if we refer this to Rules, Policies, and Procedure Committee, we could make an outline of such criteria in which we would want to see in the audit. As Ms. Lambert said, she wanted this when she first came onto this committee. So I know that she can respect our thought on this. If we refer it to that committee, we can make an outline of how we would want to see this audit conducted. In the meantime, we can contact the State Department of Education. We can also work with, inviting Madam Superintendent Taliani to that subcommittee to talk about other options and other possibilities of being able to fund such an audit and give us the time to be able to work on all of those multi-fractional things. This is the purpose, in my thought, of a school committee. I put ideas forward, we put ideas forward, and we discuss them as a body. We come to a conclusion that will work for all of us. And we're able to move forward in the best manner for everyone. So I think by adding that motion to send it to Rules, Policies, and Procedure so that we can identify both what the audit would like, what we would like to see in the audit and possibility of funding sources for such audit. And invite Madam Superintendent Taliani, the CFO, to that committee meeting. We can have those open discussions and we can brainstorm. And we can come up with a solution to create an operational audit that doesn't say that anybody has done anything wrong. It just says best practices are being utilized across all fractions of the school department. So I would like to put that in a form of a motion that we refer this to Rules, Policies, and Procedures with the items that I just listed before me.
Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm all for audit. I think we should, we should do it. And I'm sure Superintendent Taliani would be delighted to present to this committee what she found when she arrived and what we have right now. I would, I would actually recommend also, because, Madam Chair, we have approved funding recently, and so we, this body, when I was here, I believe it was a year ago. Ms. Sarni can, can add to that if you allow, Madam Chair. But we have approved a, I don't know if we call that audit or was audit, a firm called Open Architects to come, look at our finances and all of that. In fact, it was thanks to them that we found out that we were illegally paying the rent of the Devon's School and we shouldn't be paying anymore. It was thanks to that company. So I believe, Superintendent, that you should share, not only with Madam Chair, but with the entire committee, the results of that. But also work with the Finance Committee to determine, based on that product, what else we need to clarify any, to see the situation of the old schools right now. So I think it's a terrific idea. And that product might answer many of the questions. And then we can go from there in the Finance Committee. I think it's, audit's a great idea.
So, Mr. McConie, if I could from the chair, I'm asking for an external audit. I don't want.
Oh, this was external.
Right.
Yeah, it was a, was a firm, was an external company called Open Architects. I'm not saying that that one will prevent what you are suggesting, not at all. What I'm saying is that asking the superintendent to show to you and to the entire body a copy of that first audit that we have, which was about a year ago. Ms. Sarni can clarify that. And, and then, based on that, move on to a second one.
Okay, so I have a bunch of motions here. So we have a motion? Oh, Samantha, I'm sorry.
Yes, I was just gonna, you know, I will second Mr. McLaughlin's motion. But I'd like to also add that the committee discuss any bid criteria because in order to be in compliance with 30B purchasing, we should make sure that we, we define any bid criteria as I believe this will go over a certain cost and not come back before the full committee.
Ms. Cadillo.
Thank you. I would like to see us amend it as you had suggested, but we never took a vote on your amendment to remove the word ESER funds.
Motion has been made and seconded to remove ESER funds from the language. All those in favor of that?
Aye.
The, those opposed? The ayes have it, so we've stricken out ESER funds. Could you read that again without the?
Sure. Item number nine would then be request to utilize funds for the purpose of conducting an external operational audit of the Everett Public Schools.
Okay. So now we have a motion to go to Finance, and we have a motion to go to? She made a fine. Okay, so.
I will withdraw if Ms. Lambert is okay, because she seconded my motion, to go to Rules, Policies, and Procedures. And I will support the Finance recommendation. But I would like to see those steps in place that I, that I did mention, which is inviting Superintendent Taliani, our CFO, to have, create an outline of where we should go with such an operational audit. And again, to make it very clear, this is not a financial audit to say that anybody in the public services has done anything wrong. It's just best practices, policies for our.
I, is this going to Finance? Okay, oh, okay.
With the definition of bid criteria, if it falls into 30B.
I also, I may have the company that had the audit in the past. I will provide the name to you.
Great.
That did great, yeah.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to refer this item to the Finance Committee, inviting the Superintendent of Schools and the Chief Financial Officer to a meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. You're so moved.
Item number 10 is to request an update on the current EPS contract for Allied Health Services for the provision of speech, occupational, and physical therapies for students to include the duration of the current contract, the scope of services under the current contract, and the annual expense for EPS under the contract. And this was submitted by Mayor Di Maria.
I'll make a motion to lay it over to the next meeting.
Second the motion.
Motion is made to lay this over until our next meeting. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Point of clarification. The correct term to use for that, we're not bringing it over to later in this meeting. We are postponing it to our next meeting. So if you just.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to postpone to our next meeting. All those in favor by, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. You're so moved.
Item number 11 is to amend the rules of the Everett School Committee to which Chapter 1 Organization, Section 3 Subcommittee by deleting the existing standing subcommittees and inserting in its place Finance Committee, Contract and Negotiations Committee, Student Opportunity Committee, Personnel and Property Committee, Equity, Inclusion, and Diversity Committee, CTE Vocational Education Committee, Rules, Policy, and Procedure Committee, Cafeteria Committee, Committee of the Whole, and the Budget Committee. And this was submitted by Chairwoman Cristiano.
Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As it states in Section 6 of our rules, we'd be unable to vote tonight. I do have a question, however. If we could define the scope of each subcommittee as we had previously when we reduced and made more efficient our subcommittee structure, we were, we clearly defined what the scope of each one is. So I just want to see if we can get any clarification on that. Otherwise, I'll make a motion to read this into the record and postpone until our next meeting.
Second.
Mr. McLaughlin.
My only question is, and I would not be opposed to postpone this for two weeks, but what does that mean to our committee structure? What does that mean for?
I don't know. The request to me was to base it off of the rules that were approved at the organizational meeting, which had six committees. So I submitted, you know, based on the chairwoman's request, based on those six committees. And then, based on our rules, Section 6, you can't pass on the same night that you present a rule change. So the committee structure stands as was approved at the organizational meeting.
Good, perfect. So those committees stand in place, the new committees, which will be laid over for two weeks. Thank you.
Yes, where there is, I mean, it's up to the chair and the vice chair. But where there is gaps due to prior members leaving, certainly that would be up to the chair and vice chair to supplement until the change is approved.
So the committees that we accepted on the night of the inauguration go into effect. Now, the new committees that we've introduced tonight go into effect in two weeks.
If approved, you.
If approved, right, of course, right. Okay, just for a point of clarification, thank you.
I'd like to make a, from the, I can't from the chair.
Go ahead, Madam Chairwoman.
I'd like to make a motion to send all of these to the Rules, Policies, and Procedures Committee.
So moved.
I'd like to, you know, have more discussion on it. So when we come out next, next week, in two weeks, we're, we're ready to go.
Can I request an invitation to that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I would never, ever not invite you, Ms. Lambert.
Thank you.
Do you want to get invited to? Okay, what do we have next? Oh, make a motion to refer.
Item 11.
Item 11 to the Rules, Policies, and Procedures Committee. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it? Oh, I forgot to say no, the negatives, they don't have it. So, oh, gosh. Next item.
Item number 12 is to amend the rules of the Everett School Committee to which Chapter 1 Organization, Section 3 Subcommittee by striking out in second paragraph the following language, "Except for the Subcommittee on Contract Negotiations and Finance. This term shall be for a period of two years." And this was submitted by Chairwoman Cristiano.
I'd entertain a motion to send that to Rules, Policies, and Procedures.
Second the motion.
So moved.
Second.
On the motion?
On the motion. I also think we should have the attorney be here as well to make sure this is something we can do. Because I believe this can be chatted very well. Like some terms, make sure the language is correct. We're striking out for two years, you know, making sure it's a good.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not sure what the law feels. I mean, if you thought you could use a legal device on this, I just want to make sure.
Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe through any change. Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe through any change on our rules, uh, it should be under our attorney, uh, advisement. If he could come and, and just clarify any questions that we, as a party, might have, uh, it's advisable to do it, and that's-
Can we invite them to the Subcommittee meeting? We can invite them.
Yeah.
Then let's do that. I'll do that.
Okay.
Motion is made in second to, uh, send this to our, uh, Rules, Policy and Personnel Committee.
Procedure.
Procedures, sorry. I'm doing awful. And, uh, inviting our, uh, our lawyer, Mr. Galvin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Item number 13 is to amend the School Committee Rules, Chapter One, Section One, Organization, by deleting the last sentence. The School Committee shall annually by ballot elect the Superintendent of Schools as Secretary, City Charter, Chapter 355, Acts of 1892, Section 46, and replace it with the School Committee shall annually by ballot elect a secretary, in order to give the Superintendent of Schools the ability to focus on managing the school system in accordance with MGL, Chapter 71. And this was submitted by Mr. McLaughlin.
I'll make a motion to refer this to Rules, Policies, Procedures, and inviting up Mr. Galvin at that committee meeting also. Um, and I would like to just speak on this. I can't remember what topic it was.
So, Mr. McLaughlin? Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
So, as we all know, the world that we're living in today is much different than the world in the past. But one thing that an educator told me once at Everett High School was, don't live free. Yesterday is gone, tomorrow might never come. Think about today, think about what we can do to best influence the day that we're in, right? Superintendent Taliani has the most challenging task in our community, and that's being the Superintendent of Schools. There's no question that her role, responsibility and duties has changed drastically throughout these past, uh, few years as the pandemic has rolled on. If we can, uh, look at this as a possibility and a favor to help, um, relieve some of that stress and pressure, um, the Superintendent is so tasked, um, that I think we should look at all options of being able to, uh, take different measures in which we, again, I wasn't here in the past, I don't know the past, it doesn't matter to me in the past, I can only look about what today and going forward. If we agree or disagree on this in committee, then we take action on this in committee. If we agree and we disagree, that's okay. It doesn't mean that the best use of Superintendent Taliani's abilities is just be to do in this administrative skill for our school committee. Uh, this is why we have, again, healthy dialogue on all topics. So I would ask that this goes to committee, and that we invite up Mr. Galvin, and we can have a discussion about this, and then we vote on it as a body as a whole in the future. I'm going to put that in a full motion.
Motion is, uh, Ms. Lambert?
Madam Chair, um, through you to the Superintendent, um, is the, do you feel like this is necessary? Do, you know, I just want to ask you, because I don't want to help you if you're not asking for help.
Well, actually, like I had, uh, mentioned when, at, I, you know, I think I've done a great job, and I'm never asking for less work. Um, if you give me more work, I'll do more work. Um, I'm very happy to serve the Everett Public Schools. And, um, I would consider it my honor to carry on this longstanding Everett tradition of the Superintendent being the Secretary of the School Committee.
Thank you.
Motion is made for, made in second.
Motion is made in second.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Barrows has a-
But we are, we are discussing the motion, right, Madam Chair?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Uh, through you, Madam Chair, to the Superintendent, uh, being here, uh, twice a month, for about two hours plus, in the evening, does that take much of your time? Does that take you away from your duties as Superintendent in serving our district?
Well, I believe that that's part of my duties in serving the district, um, and that it's really important for me to be part of these meetings. And I feel like I would still be part of the meetings. I, I would hope that I'm still invited to the meetings. Um, but no, I actually think that, um, from what I've seen of other municipalities, other districts, that, um, the Superintendent is a, is a vital part of the School Committee. And I think providing you all with information, update, answers to your questions, I do not believe that at all to be taken away from, but rather, um, being part of and enhancing my, my job as the Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion in second to, uh, send this, uh, item to the Rules, Policies and Procedures Committee.
Invite up Mr. Galvin.
And invite Mr. Galvin.
And I would ask to be-
And the Superintendent, and, and, are you on the negotiation?
No.
Sal, you know, on rules and note, okay, would you, okay, we invite you as well.
Ask this one, so.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Samantha Lambert called for a roll call. Mr. O'Connell?
Mr. Barrows?
No.
Ms. Cardell?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
No.
Mr. LaMonica?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
No. Six to three, the motion has passed. You have so referred to committee.
Thank you. Item number 14 is to amend the School Committee Rules, Chapter Three, Rules of Order, Section One, Order of Proceedings, by requiring the Superintendent to provide monthly updates to the School Committee. And this was submitted by Mr. McLaughlin.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Madam Chairwoman, um, I, I did have some remarks on this tonight, but again, seeing, uh, again, this is why we brainstorm and we bring pieces forward, seeing the importance of the Superintendent's, uh, update this evening, I'm going to refer this back to sponsor at this time. Um, and, and again, uh, this is, uh, no intent other than just to think about other ways that we can move forward as a body.
Second.
So refer this back to sponsor at this time.
Motion is made in second to refer this item back to sponsor. All those in favor by signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. You have so moved. Refer it back to sponsor.
Is that it?
Ha. Nope.
Come on. Yes, I, I still, a lot of these, um, pieces, um, have, um, sponsors, but sometimes we forget to invite the sponsors, or they're not, we don't stay, invite the sponsors. So I want to make a motion that any piece that's on here tonight, that we make sure the sponsors are invited, um, to any of these pieces.
So seconded.
These sponsors are-
Thank you. Point well taken, uh, Ms. Sarni.
Madam Chair, unless, unless that member is not already in the committee, correct?
Exactly.
Right. That's kind of like a no-brainer there, Mark.
Well, sometimes it's not. Uh, it's always good to, you know, clarify, at least for me.
If you have any issues, please contact me directly.
No issues. I just want to-
I'll just make sure.
No issues, Madam Chair. Just want to clarify.
So seeing no items under Roman numeral seven, Committee reports, uh, our next item of business is Roman numeral eight, Bills and Payroll.
Okay. So we're gonna-
Thank you, Madam Chair. I make a motion to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of one million, three hundred thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents, and that should be a roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Motion is made in second with a roll call vote. Mr. O'Connell?
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardell?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. LaMonica?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of one million, three hundred thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents, uh, with the roll call vote.
Roll call. Motion has been made in second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardell?
Yes.
Ms. Le.
Yes.
Mr. LaMonica?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes. You're so moved.
Thank you. Roman numeral nine is unfinished business, and that would be the appointment of Subcommittee. Oh, wait, is that on there? Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Uh, while this is laid over, um, due to the, uh, rules change, I would like to ask that our attorney review for any conflicts of interest with members and, um, Subcommittee's, just due to the nature of them.
I'll second.
Motion is made in second to ma-, ensure that our, uh, attorney reviews the, the assignments for the committees to determine, um, any conflicts of interest. I encourage everybody here tonight to file any, uh, conflict of interest statements that you may have. If you have a family member, or you have, uh, you know, whatever it may be, a parent, sixteenth cousin, we want to know all of them. All right? We want to know where it all is. So, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes, all, and the ayes, all those opposed, the, uh, the ayes have it.
Thank you. There are no further items under Roman numeral ten, new business, Roman numeral eleven hearings, and Roman numeral twelve, matters for executive session.
A second. Motion is made in second if you're adjourned. All those in favor by singing, fighting by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. You have so adjourned at nine sixteen.